Yeah, and they put them next to each other.
I know, we should like put one of us in the middle.
Yeah.
Well, they're smart, they're thinking their own.
Yeah.
It was like.
That's the one, isn't it?
Yeah.
So we know the two biggest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
So we know the two biggest.
Yeah, and they put them next to each other.
I know, we should like put one of us in the middle.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, of course it's.
Oh.
Yeah.
I think basically.
I think.
Yeah, well, they're smart, they're thinking their own.
Is there a variance?
Three couple variances.
One for.
Sort of crap.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That's the one, isn't it?
Are you, do you work with Brian here?
I do.
Okay.
We work hybrid.
Oh, okay.
I like the sound.
It's kind of thin.
Yeah.
It kind of snuck back into the middle of the night.
No.
No.
Take it.
Yeah.
You want to go to the next.
One of those.
Just make them go out the path.
A lot of them make the driveway too many.
Or your.
Always in between.
Yeah.
I figured that just.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I figured that just.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I figured that just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just.
Yeah.
They just.
Yeah.
And then.
And then.
And Matt will not.
Yeah, and so.
So that was fun making Maggie very.
Tree.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, this.
So.
They don't really.
So unfortunately.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Rub him.
Here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah.
It's.
It's obviously.
And like runs forward.
Yeah.
They totally.
It's awful.
Obviously they see.
She starts.
And then he goes.
So he essentially puts.
Right.
Yeah.
So he essentially puts.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's more.
I have no.
I have all.
I tried to play.
And then never.
I never see.
And they don't.
Dreams on.
Also.
Based on.
I usually have.
It's like.
Yes.
Your packets.
So yeah, that's.
Yeah.
There is.
On your shoulders.
So.
Where did you go?
Sitting in chair.
Oh, my God.
Even his daughter might really work. She was.
So she had.
The operation.
I know.
Like maybe just.
They're still.
So.
Yeah.
They.
Yeah.
And she.
Yeah, and she.
Like.
So she's doing.
She has.
I have sixty something people.
And four.
And.
Yeah.
So.
I like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they do.
Yeah.
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 That was.
Everybody.
But.
It's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
We just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get.
We got six.
All right.
All right, it is six o'clock, we will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for Monday, September nineteenth. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. To the. Our nation. Indivisible. Everlasting.
Council first order of business tonight is the agenda review and adoption. Take a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
With a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is we have, um, open forum public comment, we have one registered tonight. Carol Sartell. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Carol Sartell, eighteen ninety-two East Highview Drive, Stock Rapids, Minnesota.
And the time is yours.
Thank you, um, you've each received an invitation for next week. Sartell Historical Society is collaborating with the sixth graders at the high, at. What is it now, a middle school, I think? Get mixed up with all the grade configurations, but it's really exciting, we'll have two days of events for the group. Each, uh, they have about three hundred kits, so we'll get a hundred and fifty each day. They'll be going to the community center and several of the Sartell Historical members are going to, um. Use artifacts and pictures and just explanations of what Sartell used to look like and be like. And they will be spending almost two hours there, so we're very, very excited and we're hoping that you could, you know, stop by. You know, anytime during that time on Tuesday or Wednesday. And you'll also get a look at some of the artifacts that we have been collecting. And eventually, we're hoping the city can support us too and find a building or a room somewhere where we can store some of these items, so hopefully. And on your invitation, which looks like this, um, my number is on there, so if you have any questions on it, feel free. Or just call the community center too, cause Ann is very helpful with that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, council, that is the only person registered for tonight. Uh, next up is approval of city council minutes. We have, uh, August twenty-second regular council, August twenty-second special, and another August twenty-second special. Take as a slate, if there's a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next up is consent agenda, we have items A through K. Uh, I know staff is asking to pull item C. Are there any others? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve A through K with the exception of C. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Again, for consent items A through K with the exception of C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item C? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You'll see on your dais a change resolution. Resolution, all documents are the same, but the legal description has made a minor change from the surveyor and I just wanted to make sure that, um, that was noted during council and in front of you for review prior to approval.
Council, everyone has it in front of them. Um, any questions, concerns? If not, would look in for a motion to approve?
I'll move that for approval.
We have a motion on item C, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item C carries. Onto public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. First one is Bridgeport Platte Two. While Scott's getting, uh, set up, uh, I anticipate those in the audience who are here for public hearings. If you do wish to testify tonight, when you, uh, when we direct you, step to the podium, please state your name, address for the record. Um, we will let everyone speak first. And if there's someone that wants to speak again, we will, uh, take seconds at that time. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, within your packets, you have a number of applications and documents relating to a proposed development on the intersection of Heritage Drive and Fourth Avenue South. Um, this is the, the concept plans that we've been reviewing, um, prior as well as just different staff discussion to counsel. With Fer- uh, Jason Ferchie, who is, uh, the owner of Four Points Development Incorporated. The proposed development at this site is a thirty-six unit R-two multifamily development. Um, there are a number of developments both on the, on the southern side and the northern side, you will see within this plat that there is a private drive. Um, due to lot restrictions as well as overall sizing and, and overall space issues with wetlands, there was challenges with the public roadway. Staff had a number of different discussions with developer and decided that in order for this development to move forward and be proposed to council, a private drive would be required to meet standards. Within the preliminary plat, I'm actually gonna move to the, the variances that are proposed that go in lieu or, that go in comparison with some of the different topics on the preliminary plat. Item number one that I'll discuss is gonna be the wetland buffer, um, just to provide some details on wetland buffer, anything that goes over five acres of wetland. And Rob, maybe can you jump back to the original, um, kind of that site overview GIS? Um, so this specific area, you can kind of see to the northern border, there's a number of wetland, uh, I believe it's around eleven acres that is wetland on this property, so there. There are different stipulations that staff has to review in order to support that wetland. Anything over five acres needs a minimum buffer of twenty linear feet from a property line, um, setback and. Anything under five acres jumps down to ten feet for that buffer linear, uh, linear foot setback. So I do wanna just highlight that there's a bigger wetland in this area and it does require a higher buffer, um, in order to build against that wetland. So Rob, if you can jump back to that original slide you had up, please. You'll see within this preliminary plat, there are different highlighted areas and the one that we're talking about right now is in blue, so one of the variances that is proposed within this preliminary plat. Is for a zero foot setback against wetland buffer. Typically what we would review from a staff level and code and what, um, staff would follow is a thirty-foot setback to that zero foot setback. Uh, or in, in difference to that zero foot setback, so in other words, it'd be twenty feet plus that thirty feet, which would be a total of fifty feet before a structure can be built. So the proposed variance is for a zero foot setback, which in change would allow developer to build up to, um, in that twenty, up to that twenty-foot line of wetland buffer.
So not in the wetland, but the twenty-foot buffer?
Correct, it would be in the buffer, um, it would be up to the buffer, so one other stipulation to the variance or one other addition to that variance is. The area in green, which is in block two lots five, six, seven, would impact that buffer a maximum of six linear feet, so. Total, um, there really is minimum impact from them, that there's, I believe, two structures that actually impact that line, so we're requesting from a staff level and working with developer that be a fourteen-foot. Buffer for those specific lots for wetland buffer. So two parts of that variance, which is a zero foot for all properties on the northern side of the plat. And fourteen foot for the areas in green, which is block two lots five, six, and seven. The next variance goes back to the original conversation of it being a private road due to overall, um, structure sizes as well as impacts from the wetland. And just the distance between right of way of heritage and forth back to that wetland. Developer has proposed for a twenty-five-foot front yard setback, which would go up to the back of curb of that roadway, so twenty-five feet versus thirty feet of property line, which is typical in our, our R-two code. So that variance again is for twenty-five feet, just an, another additional comment in regards to the private roadway. One side of the roadway would be dedicated for a fire lane, so there'd be no parking, the other side of the roadway would, would allow for residential parking within that development. The last variance proposed within the preliminary plat is for a six-foot side yard setback between structures. Code minimum is ten feet. Due to different stormwater treatment and overall wetland impacts and in order for it to be, um, a more feasible building site for the developer, he has proposed for a six-foot side yard setback. So those are a total of four variances, if include the two variances of buffer, it'd be three. Within the preliminary plat, overall preliminary plat has been reviewed by staff as well as engineering, public works and others within the development team. There are still a, a few comments that we're waiting on for the developer, from the developer and his engineering team. All items have been reviewed by planning commission and approved, recommended approval to move forward to council. Um, with a contingency that staff comments be completed and, and met prior to any signatures of agreements and, and things like that for record, recording documents in the MyLars. Due to timelines, restrictions, as well as, um, one council meeting within September, we had conversation prior to a different council meeting of bringing all documents forward. With the understanding that there's still maybe some staff comments that will need to be addressed, um, April and I, for the most part, have all of those items addressed and back to developer and we're waiting on comments back to us from their engineer team. So moving forward, um, please understand that staff still has some, some review comments that need to be addressed prior to staff recommending approval of the preliminary plat variances and final plat. At this time, I'd like to open up for staff, questions or comments for staff.
Uh, couple, two that I'll start off with quick. Um, you talked a little bit at the end about staff review and, and comments that you're waiting on. Uh, what is the substance of that or the topic, would they impact? Are they material in nature that would impact our decision or council direction?
I'll, I'll speak regards to the zoning impacts, um, we're meeting, waiting on a few minor changes, but nothing that'll change the overall preliminary. As well as the variances are final, there are some stormwater items that we're trying to address and I'll let April speak to those.
Um, yeah, we've probably got twenty-seven, thirty comments, a lot of them, um, asking for more information and clarification on drainage and, and grading. Um, a lot of those I think can be addressed simply by including more detail on the plans, some of them are just verifying separation requirements. Um, we do call out the buffer impact, which goes away if the variance is approved tonight. Um, so mainly around grading and drainage.
And the second would be, uh, the six-foot side yard setback. Um, typically that's ten, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
Uh, going to six, does that change the construction from a flammability or fire perspective?
It does and it has been addressed with chief and that'll go through a fire marshal as well as a billing official to review that and it'll have different code requirements. And one other quick comment to, to April's comments, um, as far as, as the buffer requirement, so within our review process, as an LGU, we utilize SEH and Joel asked for any wetland buffer impact, so we've been trying to work with, with Joel on different, um, ways to mitigate. The, the plan that's within our packets and, and up on your screen today, so we've been trying to work through those, um, as well, so I just wanted to, to highlight that.
Council, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Uh, just a couple quick questions on that, um. So in, in looking at the, the properties themselves, it's hard to tell exactly what it would look like, so we really haven't had any example, I, I'm sure it's not finalized, but are we looking at having driveways in each one of those or, you know, is that?
Y- yes, so there'll be individual driveways in between, um, so each structure is gonna have a zero foot, um, zero foot side yard setback essentially with the two structures. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the, the layout will be, but essentially what council is approving is, is kind of the overall building layout, how that structure will be constructed within that building layout may vary, but there would be. Driveways that we are expecting as a shared driveway for two garages for the two units.
Yeah, a question I would have is, in looking at this project, I would imagine this would be somewhat of an association, so then the association would be responsible for the, the plowing and maintenance of that street?
Yes, so within the development agreement and working with, um, specifically with public works is identifying a maintenance agreement, uh, that the association maintains that private roadway and, and clearly defining the private roadway, I think there's been discussion in different developments over the past that. We've engaged on and try to communicate that better specifically with the developer upfront, um, so yes, we've been trying to identify a, a maintenance process and that is within the development agreement in the packet as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Okay.
Scott, with the, um, variance for the wetland buffer or to the wetland buffer, what do you see as the biggest risk for that, you know, whether it's ten or fifteen years down the line?
So, two items that I would foresee is typically what we see is. So when it, when a developer initially builds on the property and sets those lot monuments, et cetera, they're required to put signage in that says wetland buffer area, sensitive area, um, essentially no doing X, Y, and Z behind, beyond this line. What typically happens is after the first or second ownership of a specific area or a unit or if it's rented, et cetera, those tend to be missing after a certain period of time. So one would be encroachment, whether that's, um, putting a fire pit, um, mowing into that area, dumping clippings, things like that, so. Our specific, um, specific people on our team are constantly dealing with that in the summer, um, trying to help mitigate that from happening and, and clean up any specific areas that we have throughout the city, so that is one area that I would foresee, but then overall, um, another area that I would see is if. Structures, if they're individually owned, want to add anything behind that, that structure, whether it's a patio, whether it's an extension of a deck, granted it's patio homes, but that type of addition to their home would have its limitations or would not be allowed. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions. Thanks, Scott. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward, state your name, address for the record. Second call, anyone wishing to testify on West Bridgeport Platte Two, preliminary plat. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. We'll close the public hearing. Uh, council discussion. Or questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion to approve, um, with two items before us, one is the resolution and preliminary plat, uh, sorry, preliminary and final plat, and then the second is variances for West Bridgeport.
You want them one or two?
Um. One at a time?
One at a time. You might do the variances first.
Without the variances, the prelim doesn't work, right?
Right.
I'll let you make that motion again.
I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the variances as stated and with the exception of the staff comments to follow.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the variances, the four variances and staff comments. Uh, any questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. Uh, looking for another motion on the resolution of preliminary and final plat.
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary and final plat.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Both items carry. Uh, next public hearing tonight is Arbor Trails Fourth Edition Preliminary Plat.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, within your packets, there is a submittal for a new plat called Arbor Trails Fourth Edition, which essentially is a lot split of a property located. A new plat called Arbor Trails Fourth Edition, which essentially is a lot split of a property located. On Sandstone Loop a- as well as Whopper Pool Way, Rob, if you could go to the next slide, please. I'm gonna bring up the preliminary plat that might identify this site a little bit better. Um orientation of this. Can be a little confusing, so just bear with me, but to the upper left is gonna be Sandstone Loop, um to the right is going to be Whopper Pool Way. So there's recently been a a home constructed, Mister Worlinger constructed a home on which is the building site within this plat on the upper left. So if you're looking at a G I S and and doing any of the research prior to this, it won't show on that G I S, but understand that house has been completed and built. Um this is one of the biggest lots within the Arbor Trails Edition. And the owner of this property decided to submit for. A subdivision on this specific parcel, you'll see that the two parcels vary. Um but roughly fifty thousand square feet, which a minimum for city standards is just over ten thousand square feet, so it meets. Those minimum standards for an individual single family lot. So the proposal in front of you as well as recommendation from planning commission is to split the. The Arbor Trails Lot into Arbor Trails Fourth Edition, Block One, Lot One and Block One, Lot Two. All staff comments have been reviewed and addressed, the specific site um of Lot Two will. Have a driveway access off of Whopper Pool Way and utilities will need to come from Whopper Pool Way as well as they extend into. A public easement that's kind of. To the, I guess, looking on the screen to the right and lower of Whopper Pool Way where where it curves. Any questions for staff? And to clarify as well, Mister Mayor, um and council, this is a a single family. Lot, there's no proposal for it to be a different rezone, it's um essentially splitting that lot per our code. The individual could have just done a subdivision and not done the plating process, um individual decided to move forward the plating process. Which was beneficial to staff to help inform local residents as well as uh provide information to council.
Read my mind on that one, um. Do we know when this was originally plotted as a large lot? Um any context or reasoning behind that?
I I do not have any reason to why other than. I think just overall orientation of the lot as well as there was a private drive, you can actually see the shaded area in the middle top portion of the screen. So I believe. There was our two or more um joint tenant buildings that were ex- proposed to be extended, but then that stopped and I think the overall development changed. And it went to single family lots and with the orientation of this specific lot, it was one of the bigger ones within that community area.
Thank you. Counsel, any staff questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, thank you. Uh we will open the public hearing for Arbor Trails Fourth Edition Preliminary Plat. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. I promise it's painless.
Good evening, Mayor and the council, I just wanna uh this is Rick Shack when my wife and here with my wife Sandy, we live at twenty sixty-two Sandstone Lo- Loop North. And I just wanna confirm that whatever changes are done, it's gonna be single family developments. Is that correct?
Yes, that has been stated, that it would be single family for the new.
When we bought our lot, there was a plowed field from Rick Populinski and he guaranteed to be single family homes. And then, of course, now I look out the front of my house and I see a big blue line well uh line of townhouses. Cause it was changed and nobody really knew about the change, all the neighbors looked at each other, how did this happen, so I just wanna make sure it doesn't happen again in our development. So it is single family lot when it's changes are all done.
That is what's being presented to council tonight, any deviation from that would have to come back to council.
Good, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Alright, third and final call. We'll close the public hearing. Uh counsel, questions, discussion? Scott, before we um ask for a motion, can we verify for the third time that single family? Any deviation from that would have to come back, um would have to be public hearing?
Correct, yes, Mister Mayor, members of council, so this specific lot has not been proposed for any zoning changes, it is a single family lot, it would remain a single family lot. If anything were to be proposed, it would have to go through a rezone process, what would call for a public hearing and all those different steps. Um required to notify staff or notify the public and surrounding area.
Counsel, uh looking for a direction or motion. Before us is a the prelim- preliminary and final plat.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve Arbor Trails Fourth Edition Preliminary Plat. Which in essence is uh dividing. One large lot into two single family lots. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that carries. Uh third public hearing tonight is uh eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North Drainage and Utility Easement.
Mister Mayor, members of council, within your packets.
Well, maybe pause for sixty seconds, those that wanna. Go watch the Vikings game, how about it? Alright, floor is yours.
Within your packets, uh there is a vacation submittal application for Dennis and uh Dennis Holland. This has been in our packets um prior in prior meetings as well as a lot of discussion at. Planning Commission as they're proposing to build a home on the adjacent lot, um Rob, can you pull up that next slide, please? Um they have an adjacent lot to their current structure, so Track B is where they currently live, Track A is where they're proposing to build a new patio home. Within this development off of thirty third. Due to wetlands and different impacts within that site um and and changes over time. Uh the house has been proposed on this site and they had to move that lot line, which you can kinda see shifts towards Track B and then heads um to the south. There is a s- so with every plat that we submit to council and with all of our plating, there are. A drainage and utility easement that runs ten feet around. Um all the the property lines, so what we are proposing is to remove. The drainage utility easement that runs straight south where the old lot line was and it's been shifted over to where the lot line now. Is shown on your screen, due to the variance process, we couldn't bring that forward due to outcome, so this is the second part in a second public hearing. To this lot line change and smittle. Any questions for staff?
Seeing none, thank you. We will open the public hearing for eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North Drainage and Utility Easement. Anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Second to offer, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final for eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. We'll close the public hearing. Uh counsel, this one seems pretty straightforward, removing. Uh a old easement and uh we've got another one already in place. Any further discussion or questions? Look for a motion to approve that vacation of easement.
I'll make a motion to approve the vacation of the easement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Onto old business, County Road One River Road Project. Who's jumping on this one?
I can start it. Mayor, members of the council, um we have a few members of the audience here and then also uh public works and engineering that can assist with this conversation. We just wanted to take the opportunity as a part of our agenda to specifically give an update to the County Road One Project. Um we know that there's been traffic congestion and there's been a lot of interest around timing of that project and completion date. Um but then also wanted to make sure we could discuss publicly any traffic calming measures uh that we could take in addition to what we've already been trying to do. Um and also further discussion around whether we want to maintain having uh law enforcement presence in the intersection, so far we've done that in the morning. Um but we could also discuss doing that in the afternoon, evening uh for the duration of the project until the last phase. Of the River Road County Road One Project would be complete, so um. We would just open that up for feedback discussions, we do have representative of the county here uh for the project, uh Landware who's the contractor. For the project and then, as I mentioned, our public works and engineering staff to assist with the conversation as well.
Counsel, I I imagine we all have um. Paths we wanna go down on this or some discussion, maybe to structure it a little bit, um is there a chance we can get an update? On the project first. Second of that, we can talk about how do we get the project done as quickly as possible and then that'll lead us into. Traffic options or calming methods we can explore.
Yeah, uh Mayor Fitzsim, I can give a a brief update, so the project is on schedule, um contractorly, um November, mid-November is when. Um it's required to be opened back up to to the public, um between the county and the contractor, um city staff. We've been working daily to do two things and one is to identify ways to get traffic to flow through the detour better and to expedite construction. You know, with the with the detour, uh we've had staff on site every day, um. Watching the traffic flow, making adjustments to the the traffic lights, there's just a lot of traffic that's being channeled. Through and along Pine Cone uh because of the project right now, and so we're continually making adjustments and doing what we can. Uh but the project itself is on schedule, um in talking with Landware, they're committed to doing what they can to try and expedite it as as fast as they can. Um there's just concrete and getting concrete becomes a critical path, um so doing what we can and that's kind of a a brief update.
So projects on schedule, that schedule uh contractually is mid-November for opening. Okay, counsel, any questions, comments on? Schedule, uh I guess, current update on it? Really built that up? I I guess diving into what we can do to expedite or move that along. Um thoughts, comments there before we start offering our comments?
Yeah, I can maybe give a little insight to discussions, um so so Derek is here with Landware as well, so we've talked about all kinds of different options in. Um so the last phase, phase three is from Sartell Street to um Fifth Street. Um so, you know, can we focus on between Sartell and First Street to get that section open so that there's kind of that neighborhood cut through? Uh that was used previously, so what would it take for that, um so that would be additional mobilization costs to focus and. Do concrete in that section and pavement in that section before getting between First and Fifth opens, we talked about that. Um we talked about getting the roadway done um and paved and striped and then working on. The project outside the curb, the restoration, the trail, that sort of thing, um that becomes. Difficult in just safety for the workers, um it also slows down the timing of getting that work done. Um so there's some challenges with that as well, um Derek, I know I'm missing a a couple, we've thrown out many ideas, anything else you wanna add on that?
No, those are the main, um Derek Bergerf, Landwork Construction, project manager. Um yeah, we've been looking at uh many different ways to try to speed up the job, um. Yeah, one big thing, if we do look at opening it. Once the road is paved and striped and opening it for the restoration on the side, uh safety is a big concern for us and the trouble. Uh traveling public, um there'll have to be measures put in to probably flag, cut it down to one lane. Um production will be slower, there'll be costs with that and also we'll drag off. The final end of the project, um. Yeah, other thing, the only thing that would, we could maybe. Speed up from Sartell Street to First, open that to pave, get that uh completed. And but it'll only be a couple of weeks before the rest, I um we're. You know, with the market, everything uh concrete, as April mentioned, right now with. Everything that's going on, there's a shortage and then there's also, we don't know what's going on with the trains. Um we're hoping that doesn't affect us, but as right now, before we could call for concrete, get it in a couple of days. Now it's weeks you order it ahead, so it's kind of set in stone to. We can't really do much about that, um yeah, I guess, I miss anything?
I mean, the other thing I will add is um all the utilities are complete, a little bit of storms who are left, that's about it, so it is building the road back. Um and the concrete's a critical path, Derek, I think you said the end of the month is tentatively when that's scheduled right now, assuming we can still get.
Scheduled to put the curb in towards the end of the month, but the the hard thing with it is you put the curb in, you gotta let it cure. Then you work behind it for the each, it's a process that you can't, you know, we wish we all could speed up, but. You know, you can't backfill against green curb, otherwise you wreck the curb, so um it's all set up, um. All the drainage should be in by the end of this week, um and focusing, putting the road back on and it's all scheduled out. Um per schedule, if not, you know, knock on wood, maybe a little bit before, but right now it's per schedule, so.
And first schedule means? What?
November fifteenth.
Okay. So you talked about concrete, it is scheduled, you also talked about a concrete shortage, do we have assurance that that's not gonna impact us?
It's scheduled right now and unless the big, the big question is the railroad. Um if the railroad goes on strike, we don't know how that's gonna affect anything. We just got noti- notices that it could possibly happen, but nothing is concrete.
See what you did there. Okay, um counsel, questions, thoughts, concerns? Tim, you've been building this for a while.
You kinda, I was thinking that the the south side of the project could be finished over the bridge and then. We could start to defer some traffic off of Pine Cone, my other question is for the county, um is. I I think there was some deferred traffic that was coming across um the Rice Bridge that. When that closed, I think there were some additional people trying to get to back across the river and I. Is that northern tier of their county project, the bridge open again? Do we know?
Hi, everybody, Jody Tyke, county engineer, we will be paving that within a couple of weeks, um the detour, of course. Takes everybody down County Road Two in a little bit different route, um this was one of our last sales tax projects for the first five years. So we thought we needed to get it done this year, um so yes, it's unfortunate, but we were thinking it was basically two separate groups of traffic. And we were trying to bring people from that project detouring west of Sartell. Um I I don't know how much, the worst part is for the people who live north of Sartell but south of the Rice Bridge, of course. Um a lot of the people I talked to are saying they're going to, they're cutting across um over to Town Line Road, north of the schools. But um not that I'm recommending that to anyone either, so um but that should be done, um within a couple of weeks, we'll be paving that.
Okay, I was thinking there was some deferred traffic maybe from east to west, trying to get across the river that was then feeding into this. Chaos, if you will, um my other question is in regards to. No, it's totally slipped my mind, alright, go ahead, Jeff. I'll get back to it.
I'll go ahead, um just a a real quick comment on just the overall project as a whole. Um it seems to me that, you know, we have Pine Cone and and County Road One, we're the main two arteries, north and south. As an engineering standpoint, why wouldn't we do a traffic study ahead of time and maybe finish nineteenth Avenue? Extension first before we shut down one of our main arteries. Um I I think that should have been considered in the whole idea and the project, and I get there's funding and timing and it's a county project, there's a hundred excuses, but. Why didn't we finish nineteenth so that we had two arteries going north and south first before we shut down one of our major? Intersections and gridlocked or city?
Um a- and so you're referring to the nineteenth Avenue South project going on.
Well, actually, the north, you know, we've we've talked about extending that.
So the Fifteenth Street North corridor, getting that constructed before. So just timing of of funding and the timing of being able to get Fifteenth Street North constructed. County Road One, I think, Jody will tell you, was was actually scheduled a few years ago and we've been postponing it. So I, you know, if you drove County Road Road One before this project, it was in really poor condition. I don't think we could have waited the two, five years it's going to take to get Fifteenth Street North constructed before it would need some major improvements. So yes, ideally, you would want to do that. I just don't think, timing wise, that would have worked out with construction.
April, just from a staff perspective on that, I I've heard that comment before, Jeff, too, from a few folks. And ideally Fifteenth Street North would have been built years ago for even the Grizzly Lane issues that we've had and the cut through that people take on that side of Sartell. That project, and we'll hear about it later tonight, is to the tune of twelve million plus dollars. And aside from us taking out twelve million dollars in debt to build it, we have no funding for it. Where all of these projects that have been completed this year are all tied to a form of funding in one way or another, whether it's federal or state or local funds. And so that does play a really big role. Do we want to, as a council, have heard the this preference of not taking out the debt? And so we didn't and didn't do Fifteenth Street North. It is a priority of ours, but it will be dictated by funding. And that is a a massive price tag, actually probably over the price of County Road One, for us to do that road. So, timing wise, absolutely would have loved to have had that project done first. But reality of it is that the city did not have a funding source for that project at all, which is really unfortunate.
But when we, when we do a project this big and it, when it causes such a a lump in our traffic system, maybe we should have taken a bigger step back and looking, looked at the big picture. I had no idea that we were going to have this much issue with traffic. I don't know if anybody else did, but I know it's it's still a county project, but we could have maybe worked with the county if that had happened. But at this point, we can't change it, so. The other issue, too, is just real quick, if, you know, encouraging people to use the busing system for school. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people feel they need to chauffeur their kids to school. Every bus could take, what, twenty to thirty cars off the street? And I think we should highly encourage people to do that. I think it's, we're missing out on that. Yet, if you look at, you're sitting in traffic, you look at twenty cars ahead of you, that could all be eliminated with one school bus. And we have, what, fifty to a hundred? That's a huge issue. So that's it, that's all I got.
Yes, excuse me. I agree, we obviously underestimated the traffic effect. Back to the original question, my take on it would be to keep the project as is and don't affect that. The safety, we talked about the costs, and then the end, we're saving a handful of days and just really adding that to the end of the project to get it done. So I think we focus our attention on how can we try to alleviate to the best we can Pine Cone on second half and all those streets. So that's my opinion.
April, when we, when we look at the detour, I'm aligned with Jeff on that, is that never in the wildest dreams that we'd be late to meetings or, you know, sit in Pine Cone for twenty plus minutes, right? What, can you help us understand what goes into detour planning? Is traffic counts factored in that we, somewhere along the line, we did know this was going to happen? Or, because as I think about, you know, two years from now, three years from now, we're going to plan Pine Cone shutting down, right? To redo Pine Cone at some point. The hell's that going to look like?
I mean, we obviously knew that it was going to have significant traffic implications. That's why we put a temporary stoplight at Seventh and Pine Cone. To the, to the extent where we're sitting twenty, thirty minutes, maybe not. But, I mean, we've watched this day after day after day, and it's really seven fifty in the morning, it's gotten a lot better. Just with the adjustments we made to traffic lights, we added a dedicated left. So, I mean, seven, seven fifteen to eight fifteen, eight thirty, so there's like an hour, just over an hour in the morning. So I feel like in talking with the the police who've been monitoring it and just people on staff, that one's gotten a lot better. The afternoon commute or the evening commute seems to have gotten somewhat worse. And I don't know if that's because of the dedicated left and we're putting more traffic on on Pine Cone or not. And so we're still talking through and and making adjustments as we can to the traffic lights. But we knew there was going to be an impact, absolutely. But when you're looking at detours and you look at the available routes in Sartell, there really isn't another route to to take cars on. There's three spots to cross the Watab River. You've closed one of the main ones and there's not a great way to get to Nineteenth, which is, you know, the third one. So there really are no, wasn't a lot of alternate routes to look at or consider.
Okay.
Can I follow up on mine?
Yeah.
So my other question I forgot was the, is there any way we could do a local detour and local traffic only across that bridge on a gravel road? Or, you know, whatever rock we could put down that would be drivable to get to First? And then that would alleviate some of the local congestion off of Pine Cone?
So we we talked briefly about that, safety becomes a huge concern with that. And we even talked about, do you open it up during just those high traffic times? But if you do that, it's really hard to control outside those times. It's really hard to control it to just local traffic. And so you end up having to do construction with a lot of traffic coming through, similar to if you try and do the work outside the curb after it it's paved. It slows it down, it makes it extremely unsafe for both the the workers and also the people driving it.
And it's happening right now, Tim, the, you know, the dump trucks need the barricades moved so they can get in and out. And there'll be cars coming right in behind the trucks, you know, sneaking through. We open it, and we've talked about it many times, of getting it open for an hour or two, but we're just afraid we're going to create, you know, everybody's going to find out that it's open and and I don't know, you know, what we're going to do, the construction's going to shut down.
I mean, for instance, I was on site the other day and somebody had been used to cutting through there. Well, all of a sudden, they they're cutting through and didn't realize that the contractor had subcut out the roadway. And all of a sudden, their truck goes off a foot and a half drop because they're cutting through construction and not realizing that the conditions had changed because of construction.
Okay.
Yeah, one, Derek from Landwear, again, I just want to go on the safety with, as the, with any season, as the job goes on, traveling public gets more impatient. We're seeing it, the bad thing is they don't try to sneak through slowly. They get by the barricade and they floor it. Just the other day, we had, I had two people discussing behind a piece of equipment. And they were probably about this far apart. And car went by the barricade and saw the other end and floored it, went right by, about two feet from one of our employees. So I would recommend, safety wise, for everybody, the little bit we would open it up, it's hard to shut it down. They're already sneaking through, but, I mean, we got to get in there with dump trucks, we got to get in there with equipment, we got to get, you know, the local people in that area. But if you advertise that it's open, we're going to get more people, more, you know, sadly, probably more close calls and hopefully nothing worse than that, but.
You talked earlier about getting striping done and then moving on to the trail work. Not holding you to it, but is that a, hey, we'd finish the first week in November and the second week we finish the trail? Or is there a wider gap in between there?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, obviously. But, yeah, if we would stripe it and open it and then finish under flagging, under, it would, it would probably, you would open it up, let's just call it a couple of weeks early, but then it'd probably take a couple of weeks more to get it done at a slower pace with a little more cost, you know?
Yeah, I guess where my head's going is, is there an ability to open, once it's paved and striped? Is there an ability to open for morning and evening commute? Essentially changing work schedule to work between those two hours of the off-road completion items? Does that, you know, does that give us an extra day or does that give us an extra two weeks? Is what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Yeah, we talked about that, too. If it's, it's kind of a twofold. We got our workers, you know, we can only make hay when the sun's shining, you know, winter's knocking on the door. They've been twelve, fourteen hour days and that's, they go all summer. So if you go and cut them back and we can't find other work, that's detrimental to us and them what they're used to. Second fold, it's the same thing, you're opening the floodgates. Oh, I could go through here in the morning.
Yeah.
I'm late for a meeting at two in the afternoon, I'm flying through. That's where it's kind of hard to
Right. Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Mayor Fitzsim, one quick point I wanted to add on the, when you guys were discussing the detour and a local detour. We have discussed the concept of a local detour primarily using Nineteenth. That is the other crossing over the Watab. And when we were initially discussing detour routes, one of the big considerations in working with law enforcement is ensuring the safety of that detour route. Pine Cone, obviously speeds, but then you're not cutting through residential neighborhoods. Nineteenth, you would have to take them to a pretty dangerous stop here at the T here. You'd likely have to make that a three-way. We anticipated having traffic control issues there and didn't designate that as a initial detour route because of that. And then you're going through neighborhoods as well. We all know the feedback we've heard about traffic congestion in that part of Sartell and and traffic on Nineteenth. But that could be an option to try to deter some traffic over to Nineteenth. But just know that we purposely tried to keep it on Pine Cone, avoiding those residential neighborhoods, high speeds in residential neighborhoods, poor intersections. And law enforcement was was fairly against utilizing that as an additional route because of those reasons and just really trying to keep the traffic on Pine Cone. But something to consider.
Any other thoughts on how we expedite the?
Well, just some pluses, too. You know, we had officers in the intersections Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday last week. We pulled them out of the intersections on Wednes- or was it Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday, they weren't in. So so the lights, we had cycling on Thursday, Friday with no officers in the intersections, which which was a plus. We had some malfunctions again with, actually, this light on Monday, which were unforeseen. But the traffic engineer was here and we got it set back to where it should be. But we have gotten better in the morning, definitely. It's the evenings we're struggling with right now. The traffic engineer, like, we'll be here Wednesday night and we're going to work on adjusting him. I'm, you know, working on Wednesday night to see if we can get better the night. You know, the thing we're we're seeing, and I and I don't know if we're going to get away from it, you know, that's, you know, Seventh Street, Pine Cone, even when this is done, is busy. And it's really busy, you know? We're really foreseeing, you know, the two schools and a lot of drop off with the parents on the schools. Again, if we can reiterate the busing, because we have a lot of cars on Seventh and and even getting County Road One done, you know, you're still going to have a lot of cars on Pine Cone Road. There's, there's just no way of fans or butts about it. And Second Street, it it's the same thing, you know, we have a ton of cars on Second Street. And it's just the traffic and the number of cars we have on the road right now is is just increasing every day.
Yeah, and to maybe button up the the last topic of the, what can we do on the construction schedule? I mean, is there, am I hearing we can't throw money at this to solve the problem, even if we had it or wanted to?
There's no for sure thing. I mean, you could throw a little bit, maybe save a day or two, might be a week, but there's nothing to say, hey, you're going to be done a month and a half early.
Okay. And I think that's for us that we're not in the trade. That's important for us and the general public to understand is this isn't a, hey, we're trying to pinch pennies and we're going to drag it out till November fifteenth. This is, we we couldn't, with the concrete shortage you talked about, I imagine that plays into it as well, that we can't just work around the clock to have this done in another week. So it's important for us to understand and for the public as well. Counsel, I know I've been part of some conversations of, hey, how do we get staff out there, PD and public works? I think the the comments I've heard from the general public is they've appreciated that, right? That they know that we're doing or attempting to do what we can to move traffic along. I I think it's, it has gotten better. I know there's a number of times where it seemed like the light was out of sync and and we've reported that to staff. I guess I'd love to see us attempt to do something in the evenings as well. And I'm not sure if that's humans out there or if we can set the right, or excuse me, the left arrows in the evenings to interact differently. But we've got a flow of traffic that needs to come into town. And, I don't know, thoughts?
Yeah, I asked that question this morning when our programmer was on site. And looking at the control panel that's on two and a half right now, you can't change the dedicated left turn from the morning to afternoon. So it's, it's one way or the other, unfortunately, at this point.
Is there a panel upgrade option?
Not one you're going to get quickly.
Okay.
Call a police officer.
That was my question, too. Are we using PD in the afternoon because of a staffing shortage or, I haven't meant to mark me, it sounds bad this morning, or why haven't we in the evening?
I think initially, we were trying to get a grip on the morning because with school starting, it's, there's that one hour chunk where in the afternoon it's more spread out. The schools get out at different times and then people are coming home from work at different times. So it felt like that was more spread out. Now, since we've gotten the morning figured out, it feels like that rush hour in the afternoon and evening has become more congested and compacted. But initially, the thought was that that would actually not get as congested because of the different release times for school and work end times.
Right, the morning has just been a little bit more consistent for the PD and engineers to try to figure that out because it's pretty right on. Everyone's leaving at the same time, but at night, you could have a different school event or something be happening that, you know, Thursday night, it might be a little earlier than a little later on Wednesday night or what have you. And from the PD perspective, we're hoping that the lights can get timed right because every time we throw an employee out in the intersection, that's dangerous. So it's not probably the proper solution for something like this. If we can't, we obviously will be out there to help, but we're just hoping that we can get our time right with the the lights, so.
I think the biggest assistance that the onsite person is able to help with is when that that lighting does get off sync. So today, we had some issues with it getting off because vehicles, it's it's censored. So vehicles will determine whether it turns on, you know, green or red. Well, when it's completely blocked and it's not getting a space to to be censored to go to red, just creates further backups on Two and a Half and Seventh. It's nice to have the person there to be able to report that, get it addressed right away. Otherwise, it just further elongates the problem. I think that's probably been just as big of assistance as it has been just to get them in the intersection to get traffic moving.
Yeah, and it came to a head for me last week when I got a number of videos sent to me of people at the Heritage Roundabout stopped trying to head north, right? You're two roundabouts away and realized that that, we have to do something, is knowing that this is going to continue for two months, are cameras at that intersection an opportunity? Or is there a another means of having, if you're saying, hey, the benefit is a human, can I identify there's a problem and report it back? Is that something we can do remotely?
John, is that something you've ever seen?
I mean, I think that's always an option. You still have to have somebody watching the camera at that particular time. So whether they're out there sitting someplace else watching a camera, it's still a person.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, it's just, they're so overloaded, even if you were watching it, it's, it just happens, you know, within an hour, it's it's over. You know, by the time you were watching it some remote place, by the time you got assistance there, you're not, I think, gaining anything. It's, once it's, I think it makes sense to have, you know, somebody monitor. I know PD is is taxed sometimes in the evenings, you know, but if it goes wrong, it's great and they've been there. You know, a lot of the officers have been there when they've gone. You know, a lot of the officers have been there, when they've gone out, they can get in that intersection quick and get it going. But the evenings are, again, that's what we're struggling with, and, and I, I hope we can better it, maybe on Wednesday, we get a little more insight on them signals, but there's just so much traffic coming north. You know, it's just so different than the morning, we just aren't getting a handle on getting them moved through.
And that light control is not on fiber, or being able to, you can't control that remotely?
No.
Okay.
And, you know, this is, as you hear the sirens here, that's kinda been my concern, is, as it gets backed up, if we don't have a body, you know, uh, Wednesday, we were out Wednesday morning, and there was ambulance coming through, and, and an officer coming through on code, but it worked good to have us in the intersection, cause we could stop everything and get them through, you know? But it's just that, that hour stretch in the morning was, you know, we were really concerned about, but, you know, we didn't have a good handle on this evening stuff, but I think we were gonna start working harder on this, to see if we can straighten that out.
Can we get any help from the county, uh, the sheriff's office as far as coverage? Seems all this was kinda started with a county project?
Yeah, I, I, bodies can help, but I mean, you can't, you can't stop the number of cars coming in, that's what this is all about. We can't.
But do we have to put the full burden on Sartell PD? Could we, you know, could we maybe look at having the, uh?
Typically, since there are, it's our road that we directing traffic on Pine Cone, it probably would fall onto us, even though it's our joint project, County Road One. But, you know, even if we were to stand out there the entire time flagging, I don't know that we're gonna get people through that much quicker. It just, it might just resolve the little hiccups that the light's doing, um, you know, it's just, there's just too many cars for the road that to handle.
Yeah, but there's instances, and I don't disagree, but there's instances that I've, as I'm sitting there, I'm calling Anna, going, there was three cars in front of me, the light turned green, two cars were able to go before it turned red again, and this is southbound on Pine Cone. If we don't have a human there to recognize, hey, there's a problem, and to work to fix it, like, when the, for some reason, the light's getting out of sync, and I don't know if, what's causing that, cause there wasn't a tremendous amount of traffic there, but that in itself, we can't let that happen every day without someone intervening there to say, hey, there's a problem with the light, I'm gonna flow traffic through, and then we'll get an engineer to come fix it.
Yeah, and I, Mayor Fitz, I agree, and I think, um, you know, for me, a, a bigger piece of it is we just heard from the, the construction update and the project update that, hey, there's not a whole lot we can do to really expedite this thing, and it's, it sounds like it's, this traffic's gonna be something we have to live with, and so I, you know, we all live in town, we all have to experience it and deal with it. I think it's a perception thing for the public to know that we are trying, we're working on it, we're putting our staff out there, we're doing everything we possibly can to try to address this. And so, while sometimes it isn't really all that much that our staff are doing out in that intersection, I think authorization from council to just continue offering that, it just shows the public that there is a commitment to ensuring safety and ensuring traffic flow, and ensuring that we're doing what we can do, um, even though it feels like it's not very much right now.
Yeah, I do know, um, a couple instances where we're able to get the buses in faster, and like to Councilmember Colb's point, the more we can get kids on the bus, the more benefit we all.
I know there's been communications from the school district that have gone out, but, um, just thinking specifically about high school students who are